Evening, I am reconvening the June 17th, 2025 meeting of the Livingston Board of Education. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was the president.
I know, where's the flag?
Roll call, please.
Absolutely, you can. This is Charles.
President.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mrs. Gump.
President.
Mrs. Kemka.
Here.
Mrs. Yelosavitch.
Here.
Your form.
All right. We're going to move the superintendent's report around because I'm sure you're not here for the financial report review that the board will receive later. But you can stick around. Very exciting. So we're going to start with the Livingston High School Academic Team. And judging from the trophies and what I heard, you guys did amazing, so I'm going to have Ms.
Sure. Should I, Sophia?
Yeah.
Okay. So like a microphone do I have to speak into?
Break down.
It's already there, okay. This is new to me. This is only the second time in 25 years that I've actually. So you're going to have to give me a little bit of slack. So yeah, so I wanted to, first of all, thank everybody for this, for letting us here. These kids were amazing and they deserve this. And I really, I'm really happy that, that it's been a lot of years.
Not at all.
Sophia, come on. Sorry. And let me take out my, took out some notes here, so I don't want to forget what I was going to say here. Yeah, so thank you for recognizing all these kids for their accomplishment. It really, I'm taking it for someone who's been doing this for 25 years here in Livingston and many years before that at other schools, that what this team has accomplished this year is something that will likely never be repeated, simply because of the enormity of what they were to do, not just the A-team that won the tournament, but the entire team itself. Yeah, I would even call it miraculous. That might be an exaggeration, but it's something that, when I first started doing this here, I could not have imagined anything like this ever happening in a million years. And it's something that I'd love doing. It's one of the reasons I've been doing this since I was a kid, and it's something that I really, really love. But, you know, what they've been able to do is really, you know, it's a testament not just to, not just to them, of course, they are the biggest part of it, but it's a testament to the district, their love of learning, the teachers, the parents that have sort of instilled this love of learning. I think that's really an important part of what this is. You want to learn things. They, they like learning things. They are interested in finding things out about the world, about things. So that's part of what this is. And, you know, what they did this year, I think, is just a result of that. And a couple of things, and I'll, more about what they did in a bit, but I want to tell you guys what this is. A lot of people just don't understand what QuizBowl is. I call it the academic team, and I've always called it the academic team, only because the academic team sounds a little bit more academic than it is, but they love to call it QuizBowl, which is really what the world, this sort of insular world that I'm in and that they're all in is. QuizBowl is basically, and I think Fang got to witness it this year, and I think Pam, you got to, you got.
Judge.
Judge last year, yes, exactly. So she can, they can be a testament to exactly how it works. But basically, it's teams of four competing against another team, either from another school or whatnot, and they try to answer questions in all sorts of categories that you, usually mostly things that you study, but it could also be things like, you know, philosophy, it could be, you know, psychology, religion, sociology, you name it. There's things in all sorts of categories of things that are, you know, that are, that people consider important to know. And their job is to answer the questions to the best they can, to try to answer it quicker than other teams, and to get points for that. And, you know, the best team, the team that has the most point wins. You answer toss-up questions, if you win that, if you answer the toss-up question, your team gets to answer bonus questions, which are worth more points. And that's how it's sort of scored. And it's sort of changed a lot over the years, but that's sort of what QuizBowl is. So we'll call it QuizBowl. We're going to stick to the academic team at the school, the official title, but QuizBowl is really what it is. Sorry. And it's been a long journey to get here. When I started this, actually, the first time we competed in HSNCT was the year 2000. There was only about 50 schools in the entire country. We finished fifth to the bottom. And, you know, we've come a long way since that. We were one and nine in the tournament. We won only one game out of 10. And then it took years for us even to qualify again. We didn't go back until 2005, so it's 20 years since we went back. And then it took three years just to make the playoffs again, because just qualifying is a difficult task. But then you have to, once you go, you compete against the best teams in the nation, and that's always a challenge. Only the top third or so make the playoffs, so you have to really, really, you know, you have to play well during the, during the preliminary games just to get there. So to give you an idea of exactly where we are, we eventually got to the point, this is 10 years since our best team finished. Our best team was, I think, 33rd. We finished 33rd in the nation 10 years ago, a team. But before that, it was really, really hard to qualify one team, much less two teams. And we brought two teams a couple of times. Then last year, we brought three teams for the first time. And this year, we were able to bring a fourth team that we had to get on a wild card. And a wild card is they, you have to convince them that what this team has done enough, even though they haven't technically qualified, you have to convince them that they're good enough. And we were able to bring a fourth team, which consisted of all freshmen. And so I want to sort of bring them up little by little, so you guys know who they are. So this D-team, all freshmen, all first-year students, let me bring them up here so you can see them. So Max, Aiden, Luke, and Andrew. Okay? So they did, this was their, this was their first HSNCT. HSNCT stands for High School National Championship Tournament, but it's understood that it's an academic tournament. They went in having gone to middle school nationals last year, right? You guys went to middle school nationals last year?
All except for Aiden.
All except for Aiden, okay. So they, they competed, so they had an understanding of what this was. And they went six and four and made playoffs, which is an amazing feat in itself. And I was fortunate to stay, stay with them in the afternoon after that. And they went on an incredible run where they beat team after team, including the defending national champion and the defending runner-up from last year, and other great teams along the way. It was quite, it was, it was amazing to see and be a part of. I was very lucky that I got to spend that time and got to see them do what they did. And they got to, finished tied for eighth in the country as freshmen, which is one of the, the most incredible runs that they've ever seen. It's the highest group of all freshmen that's ever gone in the tournament. So what they did was pretty amazing and tells you how they're going to be doing in the future. So, so these guys are going to, these guys are going to be a force to be reckoned with down the road. So I just wanted to acknowledge them. Okay, this is our D-team. D-team, Adam who's not here, Harish, Sophia, and Ben. Come on up here. Okay. These guys are all seniors, okay? All seniors. And so they also made the playoffs this year, which was an amazing, an amazing accomplishment. They, I was with them in the afternoon. I saw them actually win the game to make the playoffs, and we were, we were very psyched about that. And once upon a time, that would be the biggest success of the, of the year for us. Even though they did spectacular, they were, they were the, they finished the, the fourth best of the teams as seniors with the most, with the most, with the most experience of any team. So they did an amazing job. I was very proud of them, and I think making playoffs was a, was a goal of theirs, and I think they're proud of it. They would have always liked to do better, but making the playoffs was amazing. So hats off to these seniors. Our B-team. Our B-team, Kenneth, Ethan who's not here, Alan and Shawna, come on up. So, okay. These guys are freshmen.
We don't have an Alan.
We don't have an Alan who said he was coming. And Ethan is, Ethan is, has a recital tonight, so he can't be here. These guys are all, also freshmen. They are our B-team, and they came in 13th in the country. This is out of 336 teams total, only 120 of which made the playoffs. So they finished 13th in the country. So two more freshmen, so that's six freshmen making the top 13 in the country. Pretty amazing. And so you can see where we're going with this. So congratulations, guys. Good job. Okay, Bobby, Arav, Kevin, and Ben. Kevin come?
Kevin, sorry.
All right, it's okay. Okay. This is what they won.
If you break that trophy, I swear.
Oh, yeah.
How tall are you?
My date.
Okay, so.
Someone's been on the plane.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Instead, it just deserved like $60 of club money, but.
So, so these guys were our A-team this year. Three of who, three of the four were on last year's A-team. And yes.
What?
Only two of the four, sorry. Oh, yeah, 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 sorry. You were on B-team last year, my bad.
It's fine. No remembering gets old.
They came in third in the country last year. Not quite as, maybe that tall. This year, they finished first in the country. And yeah, it was an amazing, it's not something I ever could have imagined they did. And it was amazing to watch probably 500, 600 players watching them in the final game in a huge, in a huge, in a huge ballroom, just watching them win and playing their best game on the last, on the very last, very last game. Also, I should note that Arav finished 16th in the country.
16th, yeah.
In, out of 251 teams in April at the individual tournament. So Arav, Arav also did really well this year on his own. This accomplishment has very little to do with me, okay? I really want to let you guys know, and I'd like him to come up just to say a few words, is Bobby. Bobby, single-handedly, I would say, made this team really what it is today. He's the most passionate kid I've ever had. He is one of the best pla, he's probably one of the best players in the country. Maybe he would be in the Hall of Fame if there was such a thing for, for QuizBowl, because his knowledge and his ability to, to access knowledge when he needs to, his passion, his charisma is unlike anything I've ever seen. And as you can see in his entrance, he's, he'd die about pretty much anything. But he is, he is very responsible for, first of all, what they accomplished this year, not just him, but much of the team, and how, what an amazing team it's been. And I'm going to miss him. And I'm so glad to have had him on the team for the last four years. And, you know, I think Livingston should be very proud to have a guy like him as part of our team. So Bobby, you want to say anything?
Sure. I want to start with camera. What?
Smiling with camera.
I just want to start this off by saying, normally Rabner is the collected and reserved one, and I'm the motor mouth. And then he kept us here for 15 minutes, so I feel no qualms about giving a longer speech than I originally planned. First, I want to say that everything Rabner said about the club being amazing, about us be, about the club being so proud of what we've done, that was all true. What you were wrong about is when you said you had nothing to do with it. I want to say, Prof. Rabner, you have, I've said this before, but we owe so much of our success to you. We owe, you are the one who's always been fighting the admin to get us the fundraising we need, to get us the club, to get us everything we need. Oh, speaking of. The steepness of the board, please give us money. QuizBowl, like most things, involves the exchange of money for goods and services, and we need money, so please consider. I want to say, Prof., we owe this entire club to you. You've been spending 25 years dealing with the rowdiest bunch of kids I've ever met in my entire life. You've been spending this, you've been spending four years dealing with me, and honestly, you should be given a medal just for that. And I want to say, the only issue I have ever had with you, for four years of being in this club with you, of working under you, of being able to build this with you, is when you said our accomplishments wouldn't be repeated because they are going to be repeated. This is not the last trophy we are going to win, not even close. And I know it's not the last trophy we're going to win because of all of these guys beside me, the students, the te, the parents do, but also like the kids. Not going to lie, right? Someone once asked me what the biggest asset the QuizBowl team had, wha, wha, what the biggest asset the QuizBowl team had was. And I have to say, it summed up in one word, insanity, all right? It's the insanity to be able to voluntarily play a game like this that involves so much work and so much studying and so much dedication. It's the insanity to be that passionate about a certain topic, whether it be science or mythology or literature or what have you. It's the insanity to be able to deal with all of these different insane people and create something. But I say insane people, I'm mainly, I'm mainly talking about my boy Kenneth, all right? All right. But it's the insanity to be able to deal with all of these different insane people and build something that's greater than ourselves. And I think as a culture, we tend to suppress that insanity a lot these days. We focus a lot on staying competitive, on staying competitive in everything. We focus on the, on getting into a top 25 school or getting X grade on X assignment. And it distracts us a lot from what we as high schoolers, as students, are really meant to do, which is just be free to be insane, to follow these subjects and to follow these hobbies and activities that we are so passionate about. And to be able to, like we did this year and like we will do for so many more years, create something that's greater than we could ever achieve on our own. And I am going to sign off because unlike Prof. Rabner, I am not a motor mouth, right? I'm going to sign off by just saying to all of you, thank you for having us. Thank you so much for acknowledging, for acknowledging us, for giving us all the support we need. To Prof. Rabner, thank you for your years of leadership. To Ms. Smith, thank you for the decades of leadership you have ahead of you. I am preemptively so sorry for what the freshmen are going to inflict upon this club. At the same time, I know that if anyone was ready to handle it, it would be you. And to my amazing teammates, I want to say, thank you for sticking with me all these years. And to especially my amazing co-captain, Arav, thank you for all of the support you have given me. Thank you for always having my back. And thank you for always, and thank you for having all of these kids' backs when I couldn't. And thank you for having all these kids back when I'm not able to next year. And a preemptive congratulations on your two. Close off? Please give us money. HSNCT is not getting any cheaper, all right? It is already. Well, yeah, please give us money, all right? Thank you so much. And have a good night.
Do you want to picture?
Oh, yeah.
Michelle wants to take a picture.
Just one, one, just one thing.
Let's do it all.
I'm sorry, they're not done yet.
Just one thing. Don't worry.
Oh, yeah.
Follow somebody with a bigger gift of gab than me. I'm a little intimidated right now.
I learned from the best. Let's just say that.
But in all seriousness, there is no better pride, no greater pride for all of us than when we get to see the students of this district accomplish and accomplish great things. And there is no doubt, as a team and as individuals, that things taller than me. So you have clearly accomplished great things in QuizBowl, and we are certain that those, those successes are going to extend well beyond this team, your classrooms, and well into the world. And on behalf of the board, we cannot wait to see what you accomplish. So congratulations, and we look forward to the repeat that you so predicted.
So let's, Michelle, how do you want to do this?
Um, I think the board members just stand behind.
We are?
And I'll have the trophy in front and you guys on the side.
Okay, whatever, yeah, whatever you want to do. Normally, we have a guy lying on the.
Somehow we gather. We have Michelle, Jacob, and Abe.
Abe couldn't be here today.
All right. You guys are up next.
Your favorite.
They already know who there's coming. They, they got warned, I'm sure.
So thank you for having us. My name is Jacob Blazer. I'm the student body president for 2025-2026 school year.
Oh, my God, this is pretty tough to follow up after that emotional speech. Hi, guys.
Hi.
Michelle, I'm the executive member-at-large for student government at the high school.
And we are asking for the opportunity for juniors and seniors to have open campus lunch next year.
He's keeping it short and simple.
All right. I appreciate the simplicity.
How, how far out did they go last year?
Oh, they built, well, they, they know when they come in front, like, because I'm the one to give them a hard time. You were warned about me?
We were not warned. Going in just like this. I don't know whose fault that was.
But I will find them.
I have good news for you.
Very responsible, yeah.
Inverted.
I, I have, well, my good news for you is, if I were to say a word, I will get a whole lot of heat at home from my rising senior. So any questions for the?
Oh, really?
See, it was going to be so easy. That's all you needed to do.
Alex is my man.
I think it's great.
Listen, you guys, you guys have shown in your, in the junior year to be responsible, so certainly, and there have been no incidents since we started this policy. And so, you know, with that same commitment of responsibility, I, I think it's been a good thing for the school. Certainly eases the lunch situation, and I know the kids appreciate it. And as long as you can all with confidence represent your, your student body, that, you know, that adherence to, to what's expected during that, that time is there, I think this is worthy of support.
Agreed.
You made a, he's a.
Knocked it out alive, guys.
Again, I will remind you of.
I was hurt there for a second.
I have given this student.
Well, like, where's the trophy, right? Where's?
I know.
The trophy, the trophy is that, in truth, and, and I can vouch for this personally, is how responsible the students are with this. We, this is, since, this has not been an issue. When, I know when we first approved this, you know, there were questions. And, but the students have been responsible, and if we're going to maintain that level of responsibility and that adherence, why wouldn't we support it? So, and plus, I don't feel like getting killed out when I go home.
Drive safe.
All right.
Apparently, I've been told on the congratulations for any new driver, I should not be putting an emoji of a champagne bottle.
You got to put like the car.
Reference.
You know?
Reference. Her reference.
Yeah.
Her, my son, Alex, got his, got his license recently, and she used the champagne emoji. And I was like, oh.
That's for you.
Long emoji.
Yeah.
Yeah, now you'll get somebody to run your errands.
He picked up my daughter from.
There you go, see? There you go.
Anyway, anybody have any questions for the students here? We are digressing.
Just drive safe.
Drive carefully.
Enjoy.
Especially at 2:41 PM when everybody's streaming out of that parking lot, please.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good summer.
Well. Look who drew a crowd for her financial report. All right, let's go.
Well, listen, I'm not even sure how I can follow all of that with my financial.
I thought that because it was a financial report and they were requesting additional.
That they should have had to stay.
They would have stayed to listen.
That's not a bad idea. We should have, we should have. I should tell them, I'm sorry. We could not give more financial support because you didn't stay for the report. No support? No, no support. Anyway, I will make this quick. I know there's a lot of slides, but there's really just not a lot of, there's not a kind of information on any one of them. So, so we provide you guys, or I provide the board with, oh, sorry. Okay, with, next. With financial reports on a monthly basis, which basically give you an idea of how the district is doing financially. So let's talk about why these reports are critical. Obviously, these reports provide financial oversight. They provide a clear picture to you guys and the public of the district's financial health. It allows and ensures fiscal responsibility so that the board isn't able to fulfill its fiduciary duties. It provides transparency, which is important. It, you know, gives accountability to the community and to the stakeholders for the district's financial standing. It allows us to have informed decision-making. It provides data to support our budgetary decisions and the resource allocations and our strategic planning. And last, but certainly not least, is compliance. As a Board of Education, we do have a state and local regulatory requirement for financial reporting, and these reports fulfill that requirement. So what? Oh, we got it. Oh, I'm.
You got to switch yours.
Like, why isn't that working? Sorry, Dan, you can't control mine. Board Secretary Report basically is like our checkbook balance. It's prepared by myself. It provides a comprehensive overview of all the financial activity within the district's budget. It focuses on the appropriations, which are monies that are authorized to be spent, and the expenditures, which are the monies that are actually spent or encumbered to be spent throughout the fiscal year. The, the Board Secretary's Report tracks the budget on an accrual basis, meaning that it records expenses when they're incurred and not necessarily when the cash leaves the bank. Next slide. So the key components of the Board Secretary's Report, and I did put a link in here for you guys to be able to actually go to the full Board Secretary's Report that we do put in the backup for each meeting, but because I didn't think we needed to put mini scopes of each of the pages. So this, this report provides a summary of cash balances. It shows ending cash balances for various funds, our general fund, capital projects, our Fund 20, which is the grants that we get, food service, and our cap, and other, 30 is, yes, I covered them all, sorry. Appropriations and expenditures are another thing that the Board Secretary's Report does. That is, so the budget on the Board Secretary's Report is the first line, and that's the budget that's approved by the board when the budget is approved for the year. Expenditures to date is the fourth column, and that shows the monies that have been spent to date when this report is printed by the board. Incumbrances are those funds that we still have encumbered that haven't been spent, such as POs that we've created but actually have not been paid yet. And then the last line, the last column, is the available balance, which this gives the remaining funds that can still be spent for each particular account line. The Board Secretary's Report provides a revenue, which tracks anticipated revenues versus the actual revenues received. There's also a transfer report that gets uploaded with you guys, which shows all of the budget transfers that you guys approve at each board meeting for a month. And the certification of funds is a statement that's on our agenda, basically saying that I'm certifying there are no major. I'm certifying there are no major accounts that are over expended, and we have sufficient funds to continue to operate the district as we should. Interpreting the secretary report, what do you guys really want to look for? The available balance column is the one that's going to give you most information. You're going to make sure by looking at that column that the monies that we're spending, we're not overspending anything. We have any over expended lines, everything. We have enough money to cover the expenses that we need for the rest of the year. You want to look for large variances, if there's significant differences between the budgeted amounts that we have and the actual expenditures. And we do, there are lines that do that. Sometimes we budget more in a salary line, and things don't play out that way. But that's something to look for. Encumbrances. Those are our future financial commitments, and we want to make sure that we're in line for what we're spending for the rest of the year and ensure that we're not overspending anything. The revenue tracking, basically just to take, take a look and make sure that we're receiving the anticipated revenues on schedule. And also, if we, it gives a good idea of whether or not we are actually exceeding what our budget was for revenues or not at where we should be for our revenues. Over expenditures, as I said, this is line items that are approaching or exceeding our budgeted amounts. And then basically, the overall financial health. This report indicates that we have prudent financial management and that we have a healthy fund balance, and those are things that you want to look for. The other report that you guys get each month is the Treasurer of School Monies Report, which is basically our bank statement. This is prepared by an independent treasurer of school monies, which is what we had approved a few months ago for somebody outside the district to be able to put this report together. This focus is purely on cash transactions, so the money coming in and the money going out of our bank accounts. And it's on a cash basis, so it reflects the actual deposits and withdrawals that are coming in and out of the bank. This report provides a transparent, objective record of the district's banking activity, which is important. The key components for this report, you have the column with your beginning cash balance, and this is the amount of the cash in the bank at the start of the reporting period. The second column are the receipts, so this is all the monies that the district is getting in throughout the month. The third column is our disbursements, which is the money that we're sending out via checks and EFTs. The fourth column is the ending cash balance, and this shows the amount of cash in the bank at the end of the reporting period. We also provide you with a bills list, which gives a detailed listing of all of the payments that the district is making within a month. Interpreting this report, cash flow, you want to make sure that the report shows a consistent flow of funds and are our receipts covering the disbursements that we're making on a monthly basis. You want to look at the ending balance and make sure there's sufficient cash on hand to meet our immediate obligations. And in the bills list, make sure there are no unusual transactions, either unexpectedly large deposits or withdrawals that don't fit with what the district's operations are. And that goes into the next one, which is, does the cash activity align with what we would expect it to be with, for the operations of the district? And this provides an independent verification of the payments that were made or received because the school, the treasurer of school monies does this, and they are outside the daily, you know, function of the business office. Reconciliation, so these two reports on a monthly basis get reconciled. And the purpose of that is to ensure that the cash balance reported by the treasurer matches the cash balance in the board secretary's books after we account for the outstanding checks and deposits that are in transit. Why could there be a difference between these two numbers? It could be that they're, that we've recorded a payment in the board secretary's report, but the check has actually not been cashed yet. So the treasurer would have that listed as an outstanding check. Independent verification, this, the reconciliation process acts as an important internal control to minimize the risk of errors and discrepancies. And by having that outside person does it, do it who is not involved in our daily, you know, transactions and the daily working of the business office really provides that extra point of oversight. What you'll see, a reckon, we don't, it's not necessarily a reconciliation statement, but each month when the school treasurer has reconciled the accounts, they provide me their treasurer's report, and I make sure that their balance matches what the cash balance is on the board secretary's report. If they don't match, obviously, we have a discrepancy, and we need to go and figure out what that is. But that is important. So those two numbers, that last column on the board secretary's report, should match the numbers on the treasurer's report. So your role as board members, maximizing these reports, review them regularly, and if you have any questions, feel free to reach out and ask for clarification on anything or any questions that you have. We can use these reports for you guys to look at patterns of spending and revenue over time, which helps with budgeting. It connects the goals for you guys. So it's, we can relate the financial data back to our strategic, our strategic goals and priorities and make sure that the resources are being allocated effectively. It also monitors budget adherence and ensures that the district is operating within its, within its approved budget and allows you guys to have that oversight. And again, transparency, we all know that our, the community is owed the transparency. So this provides the accountability for a clear, concise, and accurate reporting.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was really helpful. Thanks, Jess.
If you guys have any questions after looking, obviously.
Are there any questions on the presentation?
I just wish more people can, even though they're not here, watch it online, see how hard the office is working. Thank you so much, Jess. This is, yeah.
So I'm going to build on that. I'm actually going to ask that we post this on.
Absolutely. I was going to ask if you wanted.
Section of the website.
Absolutely.
I think it's critical that the public understand our role, as well as understand themselves for how to review cash flows, because the information on this that's shared with us is public information, and they should know how their tax dollars are being spent.
Absolutely.
Make this presentation a permanent part of our website. I would appreciate that.
Yep. Not a problem.
If there are no other questions or comments, I will move us forward to board reports. Before I go to the agenda board report, are there any other board reports tonight?
I just wanted to thank Mrs. Furman. We, we were at the policy conference with Strauss Esme about a week ago Friday, and it's always good to attend and learn about the federal, state, and local issues that impact our policymaking, which is really our primary responsibility as board members. So thank you for organizing us to do that each year.
Yes, and I want to say we were very efficient. We had a policy committee meeting right there. So that was really efficient, and I think it's always a great learning to be at the policy and to be hearing all of the new legalities and how policies have been interpreted. So thank you for always being, including all of us. Appreciate it.
Any other board reports before I go to the agenda?
Harrison did the unveiling of their mural yesterday, and that was really a lot of fun. And I think their MPE is on their docket for next year. So looking forward to all these schools with their murals.
Well, I want to thank the support from the school district, sending me to the AI conference on June 6. Yeah, I learned quite some tricks, and, you know, I even sit in the conference for superintendent and administrators, just to, you know, switch the position from their point of view. As a board member, you know, it is very important to be able to work along with our administrative part. So knowing what they're trying to do with the new AI technologies, incorporating the curriculum, everything, and then looking back to Livingston, I think we're really on top of it. So that means a lot, and then I really appreciate, and the knowledge, the information, yeah, is really something. And I bumped into some old colleagues of all you guys and our previous assistant principals. Yeah, of high school. So that was really a warm-hearted mentioning, like, oh, from Livingston. So that was good. And June 9, Hillside 70 years anniversary, they're burying the time capsule. It was so, so moving, even though it was raining a bit, but, you know, the, that was the first time I've been seeing a time capsule. They buried a box of all the souvenirs from the car to the mascot and everything, and then, yeah. I can't help thinking all the students there, you know, 30 years, they're going to come back and opening the box, and they probably going to come back with their own children. So that was something really, yeah. Yep, that's it.
So we were invited to the Women's Veterans Event on Friday, so I got an opportunity to go. It was very nice. These are really, it's a small event, but it's, I think it's very meaningful. Yeah. Went to that. It was on Friday.
They always recognize one woman veteran from our area.
There was, there was two. Every time. There was two this time, yes.
Amazing.
Yeah, wonderful women, yeah.
Okay, so we have one agenda board report, which is superintendent search. So as we sit here at the close, on the verge of the close of this academic year, it is also the close of the first year of Dr. Fishbein's contract with us, of a two-year contract. And so wanted to update the community on where we are and so, and where we are going next. So we have spent the majority of this, of this year with Dr. Fishbein, just creating an overall evaluation of the district and its needs. And the next step in that process is to seek out the feedback of the community. And so over the summer, the board will be finalizing a survey, a questionnaire, that will be sent out sometime in the fall, hopefully in September, to the community, to members of the staff, students, to get your feedback on the characteristics of the next superintendent that you would like to see. Those, that feedback will then feed into the next steps for us, which is to then begin our search. And so that is where we are, and so look out for that in the fall, and we would greatly appreciate everybody's input to help the board make the best decision possible for the future of Livingston Public Schools. And so I will then close my board report with this. We are on the verge of the close of another school year, and on behalf of the board, I just want to take a moment to thank our staff, our associations for their partnership, and everyone connected to Livingston Public Schools for their incredible hard work in in creating an academic year that has produced some incredible moments, has helped kids grow and develop. And again, on behalf of the board, thank you for all of that, and we wish you a great summer, and we look forward to seeing everybody back here for the start of school at the end of August.
But we will continue to meet.
We'll be here.
During the summer.
You're welcome to come to any of our. So can I now have a motion on the approval of minutes?
So moved my voice for the second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Charles.
Yes.
Mrs. Gong.
Yes.
Mrs. Kemko.
Yes.
Mrs. Yalasevich.
Yes.
And Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I will now open up public comment. Are there any comments in the room? Are there any comments? Is there anybody online? Going once, twice, seeing none, I will close public comment and move us forward in our agenda to item one. What? Can I have, can I have a motion on items 1.1 to 1.3, please?
So moved, second.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Charles.
Yes.
Mrs. Gong.
Yes.
Mrs. Kemko.
Yes.
Mrs. Yalasevich.
Yes.
And Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving forward, item two, Student Services. Can I have a motion on 2.1 through 2.4, please?
Second.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Charles.
Yes.
Mrs. Gong.
Yes.
Mrs. Kemko.
Yes.
Mrs. Yalasevich.
Yes.
And Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can I have a motion on items 3.1 through 3.21, please?
So moved.
Wait.
No.
Actually, no, I'm going to separate one.
Yes, and on the policy, I just wanted to make a note for you guys that policy number 6169, it's on there for the first read, in the policy, there is a reference to one of our other, it says R 7230, but it should be P 7230 for policy. So for the second reading, we will correct that on there, but I just wanted to make that note. That's read as 3.21. 3.21 is policy.
It's under policy 6169, the references to all, we'll change the actual.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, we didn't.
Didn't get a motion.
I didn't get a motion.
Seconded it.
Pam.
Second.
I moved it.
Okay.
Okay, I didn't hear it either.
I'm sorry.
Pam moved it, and I seconded it.
Thank you.
Questions or comments?
No, congratulations, juniors. Another year of open campus lunch.
Hasn't been voted on yet. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Charles.
Yes.
Mrs. Gong.
Yes.
Mrs. Kemko.
Yes.
Mrs. Yalasevich.
Yes.
And Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Carries.
Moving forward to item four, Personnel. Can I have a motion on 4.1 through 4.15, please?
So moved, second.
Any questions or comments?
I just have one, and it's an unusual one. Like, I usually comment on 4.1, but I'm going to actually comment on the appointments. I just want to give a big shout out to our supervisors and our principals, our assistant principals, and our directors, and our assistant superintendents, and our superintendent, who have been like a revolving door with these hires. They're really doing a wonderful job picking some great people, and I think we're going to have a really great class at our live orientation this summer.
Okay, good. All right. Any questions or comments?
Thank you for all the work. Appreciate it. Much, much appreciated.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Charles.
Yes.
Mrs. Gong.
Yes.
Mrs. Kemko.
Yes.
Mrs. Yalasevich.
Yes, except 415. I have to abstain on that one.
And Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to items 5.1 and 5.2, can I have a motion, please? Questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please. Yeah.
Mrs. Charles.
Yes.
Mrs. Gong.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Mrs. Kemko.
Yes.
Mrs. Yalasevich.
Yes.
And Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Carries.
Do I have any items of old business this evening? Any items of new business this evening? Can I have a motion?
Can I just do an old business? I'm sorry. I forgot to mention on attachment A, just a thank you to the Livingston Chinese Association for the donation of the readers. We enjoyed a celebration of 35 years of Chinese at Livingston High School and in Livingston Public Schools. So we appreciate the donation.
Concurd. Any other items of old or new business? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great summer.